Everybody join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, roll call. Dave White.
Yes.
Joyce McCorr.
Yeah.
Melissa Cawthorn.
Yeah.
Russell Boucher.
Yeah.
Larry Shidley.
Yeah.
Mark Alexander. And David Hutton.
Here.
He's coming. Alright. Uh, let's go over the minutes from last month's meeting. Branson Planning Commission met on Monday, October sixth, at the Branson Police Station. Meeting was called order by David White. Those present were David White, Joyce McCorr, Melissa Cawthorn, Mark Alexander, David Hutton, Russell Boucher, and Larry Shidley. Those absent remain. Minutes were read by Melissa Cawthorn, PC Secretary, Joyce McCorr, motion that minutes were four. That should be September. Yeah. That's the number because we always met on Monday because of the play. Uh, did you... Joyce McCorr motion that minutes were September third, twenty twenty-five be accepted as read. Larry Shidley seconded the motion. Seven I zero and A zero absent. Motion carries permits current nineteen seventy-four, nine oh one Jefferson, three seasons room addition, Jared spoke to contractors, submitted new foundation plans, spirit three years on addition issued. UDO violations, three oh six South Park, unsafe building order enforcement issued for two storage buildings to be demolished with an early day timeline. Timeline. Two oh two South Jackson, unsafe building order enforcement issued. Permits nineteen seventy-seven, seven oh one Sagler room addition, and permit nineteen seventy-eight, seven oh one Sagler detached garage. Joyce McCorr motion that permits nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen seventy-eight be approved. Melissa Cawthorn seconded the motion. Seven I zero and A zero absent. Motion carries. UDO violations, rear two South Fletcher, unsafe building parking theaters. One oh seven of Jackson, letter issued for multiple violations, grass weeds, parking stores and alley, and outdoor unlicensed vehicles, mobility waste, unpermitted outdoor storage and unsafe buildings. Uh, Russell required copies of documentation to try and work with the owner. Um... We are Larry requested that we, uh, create a spreadsheet, track the permits in UDO violation. So it keeps updated on progress. Uh, White Committee, Mark Alexander submitted pictures for one twelve twelve East Maple and nine oh eight Harrison, nine oh eight Jefferson, two oh four Walnut, and nine oh one Sherman. UDO Committee, meeting date is set in two weeks. So we need to present UDO next PC meeting. David White butts at his time. There's no more planning business. Open forums for comment. Jared Harris retired at the road. The police fine and Jaxton could be removed. Larry wants to investigate. Next meeting scheduled for Monday, November first, twenty twenty-five at five PM. If there is no further business, David Hutton. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Joyce McCorr seconded the motion. Six I zero and A zero absent. Motion carries meeting adjourned.
Anybody got anything else in there? If not, I need a motion.
I made the motion when we checked the minutes for state change.
Your second.
All those are very good.
Aye.
Okay. Old business, um, roll close sign on Jackson. Larry looked into it. The Kirkley showed when there the question of center Jackson Street are not open. These traffic too in front. These town streets are restricted. In order to open those streets, town residents petition Kirkley Development Committee would have to be done. Town of Branson maintains for fun alleyway between Flug and Mulberry. So roll close signs are Kirkley's signs. And I forward that information to you. Uh, UDO violations, three oh six South Park. Both of those buildings were, um, torn down and all the trash and debris removed. Um, and a thank you letter sent for that. Uh, five oh four Walnut, unpermitted deck. Um, a letter of determination was delivering. Require deliver, require homeowner apply for variance, homeowner or submitted variance application, and we're looking to get here and debate that with the PCA.
We fixed the area in front of her.
So how?
I was done during the, uh, fixing all the big holes in Branson.
Alright, new permits. Permit nineteen eighty-two, five oh three East Clyde, for detached garage. Uh, Jared has looked over the application and has approved that. Everybody has copies of the application. And homeowner is here. So if I have any questions?
It's Larry. You played there.
Huh?
You were up there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I bought through one of the park streets. I'm in there fourteen years ago.
I was standing, standing on the, uh, the, uh, didn't see, I don't know.
You heard I asked a question. He's here. Is it like a kit building? Does it have overhangs on it? Or does it have a pitch roof?
You know, that's right in Bill. A lot of pretty nice houses there. I didn't know what it looked like. And it seems pretty tall, too.
Those pictures didn't have it.
Yeah, but I... I didn't know if that's true in life or...
It was just very small, isn't it?
Just the gutter?
Yeah. It's almost flush, but it's really small.
Yeah, it's just kinda like a kit garage, isn't it? Yeah.
All metal.
Yeah. And I didn't know, does it believe in what their houses are wrapped in and everything?
I mean, the colors and everything are gonna go with the, the house that's there.
But, you know, like, all the houses wrapped are pretty nice. They've got overhangs and pitch roofs and stuff. Well, it'd be okay. It's gonna look nice first. Plus, there's one up between Walnut and Clyde, the same thing, and then it's... I mean Walnut and Maple, kinda, oh gosh.
Walnut and Maple.
Kinda... Pretty rare. I think he built it out from later, certainly, about a year ago.
Talking about the garage?
Yeah. Down the square of the house. Yeah, I guess that's probably right.
The one that these... Sure got it buried, but it had fallen in the house.
Yeah. Yeah, it kinda sticks out in the neighborhood.
They got it from there, but it was already built.
Yeah. Yeah, we voted on it.
It was already done.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But they sure got it buried at first. If anything, outbuilding and falling in the home, gotta have it buried. And people told to go, so it was built before we even knew anything about it.
Did that people next door, they built, uh, similar, right?
There was one there.
Yeah, metal, can, metal building, yeah.
And metal.
Yeah, next door there was.
Yeah, they're privacy fence.
Yeah, kinda, they're good privacy fence.
How tall is your garage doors?
Ten foot.
Yeah.
I mean, hey, I mean, anywhere close to the size of the house, it's gonna look like a tiny building next to the house.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you get the argument, but it's gonna look like a tiny building next to my house, houses.
Yeah, but it looks like a big building next to your neighbors.
This is... It's real close to the neighbors. So twenty feet, so it's your house.
Yeah, the one, the one, the neighbor's house is like a modular home behind the house.
And then there's a birdhouse next door to this. Why?
And there used to be a garage there when it's been...
Yeah.
Not good. Not good.
But there was one there.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was two old slats there. Two old concrete slats.
Uh, have any questions?
Did I get anything else?
No, I see nothing.
I need a motion.
I made the motion when we approved, uh, permit number nineteen eighty-two.
Your second.
Aye.
All second.
Okay, all, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Vote.
So was that everybody? Uh, UDO violations, um, twelve twelve East Maple, a letter is issued.
Don't start building until she gives you the permit or whatever.
Alright.
Thursday, later if she gets paid.
Thank you.
Uh, UDO violations or letter issued for twelve twelve East Maple, um, for parking theaters and trash, and there was also potentially an unsafe building. Um, I'm hoping, in that letter, I asked for, um, then to schedule an inspection for the potential unsafe building so maybe Jerry can go and talk with them and try and get, um, the whole.
Make this first. I drove by and I saw there's water here in the backyard pile. That's the stuff I could see from the street.
Yeah.
You know him.
Well, I know him now. I will.
He's a builder.
I don't care.
Just then.
Where was that at? I have two buildings, my own, there's nothing else.
Oh, yeah.
It fits in the slats.
Yeah. Uh, nine oh eight Harrison, there were, uh, is, letter issued for trash. Uh, nine oh eight Jackson, letter issued for weeds and trash. Uh, two oh four Walnut, uh, I had Dave go by there, um, which I always haven't verified anytime. Um, and the weeds and the vote that were in the picture turned in and were gone, so there was no letter sent out for that. Um, nine oh one Sherman. I spoke with the tenant, um, string trimming around the house is going to be completed by the Viproc seventh. Um, yard is in tune up with construction projects because of water and everything, all that whole, that whole area town has been kind of a mess. Um, and I, uh... Anyway, Aaron, yeah, Larry, yeah, Larry contacted Aaron, who's the project manager and...
What happened with nine oh one Sherman? Back in the backyard by the sheds is two meter bases, right by the shed. Earthworks dug up pretty much their whole backyard, looking, searching for their old water lines. There was like five back there. They left it uncovered until about August or September. Then they moved the water pits into the front, dug that yard up, up with the two buildings. They put sewer in the front yard. In the side yard, um, they found a broken grinder pump pipe and dug up ten or twelve feet in the side yard, dug up about twelve foot up at the corner. And when they did, one of the two contractors left a bunch of rocks all in the yard. And in September, the homeowner was mowing, tore up his tractor, filed a complaint with Yardberry to get reimbursed for a tractor, and had a meeting with the head of the contractors, Aaron Noel from Commonwealth, the inspector, Keith Schlegel. And they were supposed to go back and address and fix the yards, get upgraded landscape, seeds and everything in there. Well, they did the job about halfway. We made them go back. The contractors stated they picked up all the rocks out of the yard. They didn't. So then the contractors, Commonwealth with the contractors, made an agreement to come back after Thanksgiving, try and get all the big rocks out of there. And then the March twenty-third, come back and fix the landscaping so that people can mow. The only problem we had, and I think she talked to the homeowner, well, the manager, I did too, that shouldn't have kept them from weed eating around the building.
Right.
Weed eating around the shed and the backyard. So I think Melissa called them and got the tenant to agree to trim, uh, get all that weed to wait in the building and that shed and the tree in the back. But he has had nothing but trouble with that yard and the contractors. They tore up most all his yard. And they did a really bad job. They did a really bad job all the way down Sherman. So they're all coming back March twenty-third because Sherman is a blooming mess.
Like you said, I did, I talked with the tenant and he was out of town in Georgia, but is supposed to be back this week and asked that we give him till this coming Friday and he'll have all the other reasons I've cleaned up. So it's in process. I know, uh, up next is the UDO. I know I sound like a broken record. Um, I'm not finished on it. It's just taking me a lot longer than I anticipated it taking me. Um, I hope to have it done here in the next, like, two weeks, but it's just been crazy busy and I, as hard as I try to work on it, it doesn't, it's very slow going, but I am working on it. Uh, White Committee, did you have anything else, Kelly?
I don't have any pictures, but there were two, um, can we just give you numbers?
Yeah.
Nine oh seven Locust.
And what, my local?
It was, uh... Yeah. Yeah. It's got all kinds of stuff. It's a new house, kind of a new house. It's right on the corner of Locust and Delaware. Is that right?
You know where it is, Larry?
Yes.
And it's got tra, right on Locust Trash, but it's weeds all grown up and they got all kinds of vehicles sitting around. It's a mess.
Okay.
And then one oh five Eleventh Street. Joyce will know where that is. And it's a mess, too. Weeds and just...
Okay.
Unkept.
South, north or south of Eleventh?
North.
North of Eleventh?
Yeah.
Right next to...
Number, uh, uh, everyone went to East, I believe.
That's where I live, used to live. Next to my...
Second out.
I feel like I have that on my list.
Okay.
That someone else turned in. I know I have one on Eleventh. I'm just...
It might be that one because they all mow it and then they won't mow it and now...
Yeah, but we have to tell them every time.
Thank you. What you have on Eleventh is what I say, you would send it to two hundred block.
Okay, so it's, it's something else. Okay. We'll get them that with you then.
None of them.
Okay.
Two hundred.
No, and then two hundred block of Eleventh.
South of...
Third one, man.
I, yeah, I, you don't have a letter by it. Well, you know, I think I just kind of over the UDO, um, I'm not sure. But yeah, there's another one on the letter, too, that is on the list and letters walking on it. I don't remember. Was it two oh four?
Uh, Eleventh and Penn.
Eleventh and Penn.
Wayne's little house. Oh. The little one.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Up by the house or out by the street?
Uh, well, there, back by the alley, there's cars. They don't inspire plates on it.
Okay.
And all around the garage and everything, the streets are just high.
Yeah. Yeah, now I know which one, yes. So yeah, it's, it's a different one on the...
There was something in it. I don't know what's something in the middle of the brush pile, but there's something in there.
Did you go look?
Well, I did, 'cause I look at street views and it's like the bed of the truck that they turned into a trailer that's parked back in there with, uh, snow, wow. But you can't, it's grown up so much, you can't see it.
That's, that's right. Uh, he used to pull that.
Yeah.
It's an old pickup truck there, made into a trailer.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to ask, I spoke with Russell earlier today. Um, I made him a nifty little binder because the owners of the eleven Jackson Street over here had contacted him about trying to work together to get it straightened out. Um, so I put together a whole book for Russell to get with him. Were you able to talk to him today?
I talked to him today and invited him here this evening, yeah.
Okay.
They're right there.
Oh, okay. Um... And then, I forgot to write this down, um, that I wanted to ask on permits, now that we have a building inspector, what is everyone's opinion on what we need to approve here as a planning commission before issuing a building permit? I, in my opinion, I feel like accessory structures, fences, all that kind of stuff, as long as Jared looks at it and approves it, so we're not making people wait. You know, if someone came in today and, you know, applied for a fence, they would have to wait a whole month before, if we made it so that they have to be approved through the planning commission to do so. Um...
I felt that, um, Jefferson Street, we had something go through and we had to table it. Now they changed it. But I figured, if the project's pretty big, somebody doing something, they ought to come to the meeting so if there's any questions, we could find out then, instead of putting something on thirty days.
Um, so, I mean, I was kinda thinking, any kind of new construction, a new home, new business, anything like that, remodeling for like a change of use, those things be what needs to be approved by the planning commission as a whole. And then some of the smaller things, if, you know, Jared goes over it and approves it, is everyone okay with me just issuing, you know, the permit for it? It'll, you know, everybody will be informed about it, but we're not making people wait a whole month to...
If you're adding square footage, you probably should go through the planning commission. If you're doing a roof, uh, electrical plumbing or something, I don't think it needs to come through here. And fence, I really don't think fences unless, I suppose if somebody want to put up an eight foot high fence.
Wow, I mean, they, they would have to get a, they would have to get a variance for that anyways, 'cause eight, that's probably about six foot.
But most fences would probably be okay. But hey, maybe, you know, if you add a pool, it might want to come through here. If you're adding square footage, I think.
I kinda agree with that because you, I approved the, the guy on, on Clyde for his garage. You know, I approved that. The only thing I'm looking at structural, I don't care what the outside looks like.
That's where we got in trouble the last time. The building inspector would approve it and say, "Go ahead and start," you know.
I'm approving the structure, but I mean, what they put on the outside, it doesn't have nothing to do with me.
And you approved it for the code, as far as the codes go. And we're kinda proven it to make sure the neighbors are gonna...
Right.
And you know what I'm saying, we're making it to plan then and be part of the neighbor.
But that's, I...
That's not my job description.
Right, that's how it is. As long as we agree that way.
And that's why I would like to get some kind of consensus on that, so I know when someone comes in and fill out an application, it's a fence. Now, you gotta wait, you gotta wait a whole month for the planning commission to, you know, to approve it, to put up the fence versus a home. I absolutely no problem making someone wait a month to, before they can get issued a permit.
A new structure.
Yeah, new structure, adding to, or either adding to or adding additional living space or change of use.
You know, like a pool, anything you're gonna be taxed on probably, you know what I'm saying? If you're putting new roof on, you won't be taxed on it. But if you're putting outdoor structures, anything, I think building space probably should come through here for at least for a while.
I just don't want it to get too comparable and things are just moving faster like where we were before he came. So I'm...
Oh, man, that was a nightmare there for a while.
I mean, and the aesthetics of it's not my job.
Right.
So that, that's, that's the one you want.
And we're not here to determine the codes either, you know, he is, but our part's just trying to keep the neighbors happy and make sure, you know what I'm saying?
So new build, adding square footage, remodel, adding living, living space, remodel, change of use.
Pools, garages.
Pretty much anything that's taxable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything you add that's taxable to add to the tax base needs to go over here. I mean, if I got a gravel driveway and I want to put in a concrete driveway, that's gonna add to my tax base. And I'm gonna change the look of my house.
Okay, um, that was... Mm-hmm, yeah, I, that just, like I said, some of these smaller things, I feel bad telling somebody, you gotta wait.
Oh, yeah. And we kinda had that moratorium and we're getting past that. We're a lot more organized.
Yes.
I think everything, when I first started here, it was already built or already done when we voted on it. Several of them, about eight or ten of them probably.
That's what I wanted to watch, you know, because if you had to go, you got to hold it, you, Joyce, or somebody got a question, they had to hold it up. So I think you gotta be careful, 'cause we're headed in the right direction.
Oh, yeah.
And, but you gotta stay with them.
I just got one comment and I don't know how planning commission feels. We're currently working on, we had some cases, we're supposed to have a scope of work on electric and anything where we bring outside utility in here to do stuff, even our water. But when I asked the question, did Jared know about any of these places? 'Cause we started putting a water meter in and nobody even knew they were getting a water meter. There was an order come in, but we are supposed to get paid, supposed to have a signed scope of work to make sure it's put in properly. And then it's supposed to be paid for first before we put it in. One of the problems is, like, the water meters used to be around nine hundred dollars for all this stuff with the water meter. It's over twenty-one hundred dollars now.
Whoa.
And, but the thing is, we, I had to ask the PC, do, would they want any of these work orders to come in to go through our, through our inspector? So that he's aware that there's a water pit, a new meter, so that he can inspect. 'Cause I know one, already got hooked up and he didn't inspect.
Alright. Well, and that is also something I'm, uh, going to add to the new build permit application. It's not on there anywhere.
That's what I mean, non-permit.
And I was unaware, the, you know, we've got these new builds that I, the first time I've gone through it, it wasn't on the permit, so I didn't know.
No, it's okay. On the new permit, should we add something to the new permit? Uh, it's already on our schedule that says you have to get a deposit, you know, for your, for your water, for your meter. Should we add it on our new filling permit under the electric to plumbing? In his permit process, so that he knows, he said, "Hey, I've inspected where they're putting things, it's okay, now you've gotta collect your money."
I say yes.
Should it be on the permit?
On new build? Yeah, probably. Is there sewer type fees too? Is there sewer type fee too?
There could be a sewer tap and there could now be a stormwater tap, 'cause we've got enough stormwater pipe in here, we can start tapping some places to the stormwater instead of putting it in the sewer.
Russell, what do you think?
I'm worried about it.
Dave?
That's fine with me.
Well, I think it ought to be on there. Man, if you start saying, "I'm gonna owe another six thousand," I might think, "Oh God." I don't wanna come up where you're asking for. Well, it's twenty-five hundred dollars was the last testament for a water meter, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
If I did a sewer tap, stormwater tap, and I had some electrical coming in.
I definitely think it should be, be on there.
It should be on the building.
And it should be another line item inspection as well.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it should. 'Cause he's gonna have to make, they're gonna put the meter pit in, but he needs to make sure that the water's put right on the property. 'Cause I haven't seen one water lined down about that far.
I bet they have problems with water.
I don't know, yeah, it will wind down next year, this winter.
We need a motion in there.
I make a motion that we add to the new building permits, information on the new water tap fee and electric, as well as stormwater.
And sewer.
And sewer.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Coz?
Can I, can I ask you a quick question? Like that one up there on Woodward, they'll be tapping into the stormwater. So that will be, they'll have a fee to that, right? Correct. Okay.
I don't remember that established yet. I thought in the fee schedule, so that's.
No, we have to add it to the fee schedule too, but you have to wait until the storm board meets to see what they want to do with the fee. The last I talked to them, they want to just make sure the fee is enough to cover his inspection.
And like for Don's build, if he's not tapping into stormwater, then he wouldn't owe anything, is that, well, is that what they're hearing from you?
Correct. Only if you're tapping into it, but we need to make sure, even in stormwater, we're getting that rubber boot put on the line to go in. 'Cause some people, it's just knocking holes and.
With Woodward, you need to make sure it's correct, because. Trust me, they need inspection.
Yeah. No, this is very much there. Does anybody else have anything?
The demolition thing you were talking about the other day? Like when they tore down the garage.
Uh, yeah.
I think you should get permits for that. For one, you know, the town pays, you put the, you know, send them a letter. When she calls me and tells me to go look at a job, you gotta pay me, so, I mean, they should have to get something.
Which that's happening, so our current fee schedule says demolition permit with utilities, major demolition with plumbing or utilities, I think is what it says. So it makes it so.
Hang on, what did we do with you? The demo.
I can't remember all that.
You took the electric and everything out.
Everything, everything up and down.
Right. But in cases where it's.
But I think then he only had to get the, pay for the demo permit, once he got that, he was able to take it down.
Right. I'm just saying, the, the way that it's worded now is major demolition that includes utilities. That's how it was on the fee schedule to start with, and that's why.
I mean, they're paying her, then she calls me and has me go look at it, so she's obviously got, they gotta pay me again. And then, if they demo it, like the Fletcher Street, I mean, we just said demos, I mean, technically they could knock it down, leave it laying on the ground, it's demo. It's not unsafe anymore, it's laying on the ground.
I think it, part of that order says that it has to be cleaned up.
I didn't read that part, so.
Well, I don't know.
They should have paperwork.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I feel like there should be more than one level of, like, if someone's got a, you know, a storage shed that doesn't have water, doesn't have anything like that.
Even if it's unsafe, they have to hold a demo permit.
I'm just saying, going based off of what the fee schedule says, it doesn't specify for anything outside of major demolition with utilities. So, if we wanna charge for other demolition, we need to figure out a fee schedule and say, all other demolitions or small scale or whatever, however we wanna word it, and list that as another line item, in my opinion. Unless you wanna just change it to say demolition and charge the same amount to everybody regardless.
Do you charge on unsafe building? If you send an unsafe building later out, you charge. If they don't tear it down, then we go out and tear it down and make it lean.
Right.
We're just asking them to tear down a lighted property.
Yeah.
Then we already have money, so they may out there and pay her, so. Basically, they can't sit down, money, send me somewhere to look, something should be hers. Their responsibility, 'cause it's only a lot.
I, I don't know how, how, how do we do that?
You got a chance.
Do they make it so that there's a fine along with, when an unsafe building is ordered to be demoed?
You can't, so in the case over here with Tiny, we couldn't charge him till they had a chance to take it down. Then we took it down. Of course, we didn't report that, so we didn't get paid for that, the town had it there down. We need to ask Jeremy if we can charge him, if we got an unsafe, if we can charge him any money.
To me, this doesn't seem right to count.
No, I got you. There's, there's, you gotta go step by step. If you don't, we'll get in a situation with, this is about the third one we did. And we've only got money for one out of three.
Which that's, we, we did one.
Step by step. We've got that letter somewhere that says what you can and can't do from Alicia. Maybe I can find it.
So we need to research demo.
Yes, 'cause I agree with you, he should, he's gotta go out there and survey it.
Yeah.
He should at least get paid. If he's willing.
Shouldn't come out of town, stop for a little.
No, I get you, I get you. There's a fine, I think there's a fine for unsafe building, so. I don't know if we could.
I mean, I got it.
It's the demolition, but we have to have the money somewhere to pay for it, take a time. Check with Ken. See if we've got a line item that can count, whether it's a account or not.
Anything else?
You guys, you guys.
Ma'am, that's. Okay. So, we're now open. I don't know if you wanna start off on anything or.
You guys, got anything to say? You seen the backhoe?
Yeah, they're with me. They're with me. I just, I, if I were to need, uh, some, uh, what's your name?
David Brandon.
Ha, Brandon.
David and Brandon.
Yeah, David and Brandon. They're the ones that got the property down, one oh seven North Jackson Street. They've been working, they put up, they're working on one building, well, they're working on two buildings right now, they're putting on metal on that, on the south building that is on Jackson. And they're working on fixing the building up on the north side of Jackson. They put new doors up, tore the old lean two down, which is there that was about to fall down. They're making progress. And I told them, back in office, that I would work with them and try to help them out with this UDO. And I went to you and talked to you about it, told you that I wanted to work with them. And I know that they, they both got other jo, they got another job, they're in business for themselves. And they are busy guys. And what has happened down there has, it took, it's over a period of time. So, just, the only thing I'm asking is, is if you give me and give them also some time to work on this UDOs, we'll get it squared away, right guys?
What's a UDO?
It's, it's the, like, development order, it's, so it's all the rules and what you can and can't do and that kind of stuff.
Well, I'll, I'll speak briefly shortly, 'cause Russell speaks very eloquently, thank you. We know that it needs.
Uh, yeah.
Do I have to?
Yeah, he can't, he, he's a.
Just so he can hear.
You're a TV.
He can see you.
Uh, we know, we know that it's gonna let go, but I wanna, I wanna interject something here. Those buildings have been in that situation twenty years prior to being bought. So people that grew up here, Russell's one of them, I am Larry. This isn't, this isn't something we created. This is just something that has happened, as Russell said over time. So it's gonna take a while to do anything productive, but trust me, trust me, trust me, when we're done, everybody will be happy. We're just working to clean and move and do some things. There's a lot of things in the letter that we got that are, I'm gonna quote, quote, say garbage. It's, it's, it's not relevant to what we've got going on down there. So I went to Russell and I said, "Hey, we got a problem here." And he offered to step in, help us, help, help us, you know, be a mediator between you and I. So, we don't have a problem. We're good to the town, we've been a good steward to the town, and we'll continue to do so. We've done a lot for the town. Would you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, I just wanna let you guys know, through him, we're gonna keep on cleaning and.
You have a timeline, sort of.
I will not, I will not give you a timeline. I'm, I'm in the middle of a, a half a million dollar project right now. We will continue to work on it. By, before Christmas, I think Russell will go, "My goodness, what a present." How's that?
Sounds good.
Yeah. But I'm not, I'm not gonna commit to that, 'cause, you know, we, things happen. We own a small business and things happen.
Hey, I'd like to say something. You can't. Hey, I've lived here all my life, and I don't agree with everything you say, because everything I see down there is what you brought in.
Mark, Mark, Mark's face front.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I think everything's down there we can complain about. You brought in all the trucks, the equipment, blocking the sidewalks, part of the street. I lived down there on that street a long time, and it used to be nice. Well, it used to be nice. I feel like I've talked to him. But I think, I've got businesses, you're no busier than I am, and I probably own more property than you do, and none of it looks bad. So.
I didn't come here to get a lecture from you.
No, I just, excuse me.
I came here to speak through Russell to this board.
That's fine. I think that you told us that none of that's your problem. It was there twenty years ago.
That is not what I said.
You might give us a timeline, and I think we need that.
I just said, before Christmas. I, you will notice a big difference, but here's the thing. Those buildings were in those conditions when I bought the place. They were. There's no doubt about it. I've got photographs.
And what have you done to them in twenty years?
Uh, not very much.
Yeah, okay.
Not very much. Are you, are you, are you committed, do you have a problem with me? Because you come, you come at me, and I don't appreciate that.
I do a little bit, because you're saying that it was like that when you bought it, and I know it wasn't.
Can I have a copy of that?
No, I said, I said the building's worth it. It just needs to be cleaned up. I, and I just said, that's what we're gonna work.
And we need a timeline.
And I just said, before Christmas, I think you'll see a big difference, 'cause you can't put two weeks on, you can't put two weeks on, you can't put three weeks on.
You're giving us to the end of the year and you have to clean it up.
I think it'll make a big significant difference, but you gotta understand something else.
Betty will come try and work with them and.
This is my, the equipment is my business. You guys are acting like that's never happened. There used to be a, if you lived here, you know that there used to be big equipment running in and out of there, and according to the letters that I got, it indicates that it's never had that kind of stuff, and that's ridiculous. There was a hall, there was a hall building operation there.
And it was clean.
I agree with you.
It was, and it was clean.
I totally agree with you.
Larry, you all kept that thing immaculate.
I knew, I knew that. I done business down there. Yeah. I did business down there. I agree. I haven't said that.
But you're living in the middle of a residential, you're.
This is a commercial property, and I'm not living in the middle of a residential area.
There's houses all around.
There, and you know what? The people that are immediately around me are usually, and have been awfully good people, and don't, don't call and complain to me, they're pretty happy that we're there. So, I'll end it with this. Russell, I will do as I said I would. Will continue to work, clean, do facial improvements. We spent, uh, right at thirty thousand dollars right now just on superficial stuff.
I'm gonna need a deadline, like, I need a deadline when it's gonna be done.
End of the year is when I'll be done cleaning.
Okay.
There.
End of this year? It's a lot of work.
If you're gonna, now listen. I'm not moving out, and I'm not moving my stuff away. We'll organize and clean that place up. That's what I agreed to, okay? We got a problem down there that was created by the city. You know nothing about that, because you weren't here when that happened. They resurfaced the street between ten and twenty years ago down there, elevated the parking lot, and we got water that runs into the building that we didn't have when I bought that place. I got a mope right through the middle of it that looks like shit. It looks like a, a terrible nasty hole. Would you agree?
I haven't said it.
It doesn't matter. It, it does, doesn't it, Russell? Okay. The thing is, we, we, we fully intend to put drainies in there, I've already got permission to do it. I've already spoken with the people in town about doing it. And that'll help fix a lot of that. That'll change the appearance of that. So, you see, I'll do that. I inherited that problem. That problem wasn't me. I didn't do it. All right?
Yeah, I just asked for a timeline. You said for a year, I'm good with that.
I'm not gonna be a year, end of the year.
End of year.
That's right. That's, we're gonna have some major, major changes, but end of the year. They're working on it now, so.
By, after changes, I meant the letter, all of them.
What did you just say?
The letter that you sent? Like all the violations, all of that?
Those aren't, about half of this is not violations. This is ridiculous. Whoever wrote this, there's a lot of garbage in here. There's a lot of defamatory stuff in here too. There's a lot of stuff that don't exist. Okay? Now, I will, as I spoke with Russell, and I will continue to speak through Russell unless Russell doesn't wanna do it.
I'll do it.
We'll keep, we'll keep moving forward, we'll keep making positive changes, and we'll make a significant difference down there. If you can accept that, then I've got nothing to offer. But, don't look at me and tell me to take my backhoe out of there or put it in a shed. We're in the excavating business, that's our business, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have that equipment there. That equipment will be there.
I have equipment too, but it's not sitting all over my friggin' yard.
Having equipment and having a business are two separate things.
Exactly.
I own two of those, buddy.
Okay.
His name, I ran.
And having a business are two separate things. You have to have a laydown yard or a place or shop or whatever to store your equipment.
Half of our equipment isn't here. You, you've never seen half of it. We're, we're big enough that, we've got four hundred thousand pound excavators that have never hit the dirt here, okay?
Mark. Go out there, so Dave.
What about your junk equipment?
Junk equipment?
There's, there's.
Please specify.
There's stuff with the hood been up for two or three years.
Where at?
Down there.
Where at?
You've got a dump truck down there.
Where at?
There's stuff that doesn't have any plates on it, it's been sitting there.
Do me a favor and specify which one has a hood on it.
He, he can't, 'cause it's not there.
Exactly.
So, that's.
You haven't got a dump truck there that's been sitting there forever with the engine out of it?
That is an exaggeration. It doesn't even have a hood on it.
It's been there forever.
No, it hasn't. We brought that in to disassemble, because we do salt, salt work, okay? If you want, and that thing is an eyesore. I hate it. I'll sell it to you when I get the bed off of it, if you want.
But you know, you can, you have to tell us if there's junk sitting around everywhere.
That is not junk, that's a work in progress, okay? That really is. That, matter of fact, you'll probably see a significant change on it. You're, I'm not gonna sit here and split. not gonna sit here and split hairs on pieces of equipment. I'm not gonna do it.
I think what you're...
But that is a dump truck.
Trying to tell me that it's beautiful down there.
Oh, no.
No, 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 no.
I didn't.
Do us a favor, do not put words in our mouth.
I didn't say...
You never once said it was beautiful down there.
I never did.
What are you saying then? Tell us what you're saying.
I just said.
It doesn't look good?
No.
How many times have you...
And you've been there twenty years and it's looked bad?
It has looked bad for several years.
So, you're coming in here and say, "For twenty years, I know I've let go, but I'm not gonna take any deadlines, it's been..."
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, "Oh, that's not gonna happen, that's not gonna happen." I will work with you, but I'm not gonna be down or dictated to, I'm not gonna, because this right here, what I got in the mail is absurd. It's absurd. Now, the place looks rough, I've said it in front of everybody in here. It looks bad, I've said it in front of you, I don't even repeat that. I've also, I've also said, I'll continue to work with this gentleman right here to do some, Larry asked me a year ago, "Dave, do something." Did you? Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you?
We have been working on it. Wait, excuse me?
We're just, we just...
But I have been, I, okay, I have been working on it.
And you can't come in here dictating us.
When you're trying to, you're trying to shove it down my throat.
That's what we do to everybody when they got...
Trash.
Give them thirty days.
I don't have trash, don't even go there, that's not what it is. That'd be like calling like pipe trash that, that we use in the business. That'd be like calling Steel Mart steel, or not Steel Mart, but their steel trash out in front of their building down there, that's not trash, that's part of their business. Now, have I not said repeatedly, I'm about five or six times into it, we know it needs cleaned up, we know it needs something done, whatever, okay? End of the year, you'll see a significant difference.
You'll have it all done by the end of the year?